We have an agenda. Moving on, item three, approval of the meeting minutes from the October 24th, 2023 meeting. Any amendments?
Yeah, so this will be on page five of eight. It's line 204. It says, "Berg commended Mr. Strandlin for changes he made." Actually, that was you, Commissioner Belfany, that said that. And also, Sherry Elensbeck also had said positive comments. I don't know exactly what they were, but she kind of prefaced them and then you continued on.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
There's no other changes. I'll entertain a motion for approval of the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the October 24th meeting.
Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. All those in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye, abstain.
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 For those who are here, thank you. We have that is approval. And we are moving on to item three. We're going to have a public hearing, conditional use permit for Team Properties Group LLC at 18533 Buchanan Street Northeast. Aaron, whenever you're ready.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the Planning Commission. Jennifer O'Brien, co-owner of Team Drywall Incorporated, an East Bethel-based company and residential drywall, in residential drywall for over 32 years, has purchased the site 18533 Buchanan Street Northeast, formerly Northern Asphalt, with the intent to grow and expand their operations. The 2.9-acre property has an existing 6,000-square-foot office with 5,000 square foot of customer parking and 40,500 square feet of screened exterior rear and side yard storage. 18533 Buchanan Street Northeast is zoned light industrial in accordance with city code. Construction, trade, and service businesses are permitted in our light industrial by conditional use permit, as well as exterior storage. However, construction yards are exempt from exterior storage requirements as outlined in Section 24, 4A, provided they are located in the rear yard behind the principal building and cannot exceed two times the square footage of the principal building and shall not be allowed within the required setbacks, public right-of-way, private easement, or within the required parking area. 18533 Buchanan Street Northeast has an existing exterior storage area, rear and side yard, approximately six times the size of the principal building. However, it is fully fenced, meeting all the screening requirements of the ordinance and reducing the visual impact from the right-of-ways. Accessory storage containers, as defined in Section 01, general provisions of administration, are not permitted in the light industrial area. Team Drywall Incorporated currently has one employee and equipment will be out on job sites daily as this is a skilled labor residential or commercial job site-based business. The existing 6,300-square-foot parking area is designated for 17 vehicles, and with the abundance of exterior yard, there should be sufficient parking for employees in the event more employees are added to the business. Vehicles over 20,000 pounds gross vehicle weight, construction equipment, and trailers shall be required to be in the exterior storage yard and behind screening. The light industrial district is intended and designed to provide areas in the city suitable for activities and uses that are more industrial in nature. This proposed use aligns with the approved 2040 comprehensive plan. Staff recommends the Planning Commission review the conditional use permit requests, hold a public hearing, and make a recommendation of approval to the City Council with conditions set forth in the attached Resolution 2023-83.
Thank you. Seeing this is a public hearing at this time, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please come forth to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing at this time. And I would entertain either a motion for approval denial or a motion for discussion.
Make a motion to recommend the approval of a conditional use permit for Team Properties Group LLC at 18533 Buchanan Street Northeast.
I'll second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion?
I am curious. This probably isn't a big deal, but I just noticed a slight discrepancy between the square footage of the parking areas described. Where are we at? One says 5,000 square feet, and the other said, I think, 6.7? 6,700?
6,300 square feet.
Yeah. Is there a reason for that? Are there two different parking areas?
There's just one. You can see it here on the map.
Yeah.
I likely copied this over from another conditional use permit, but we'll find out right now. 6,300 square feet.
All right. That's neat.
Thanks for pointing that out.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion approved. This will go before City Council. Is it December 11th? December 11th, thank you. Wish them the best of luck in their growth. All right, with that, moving on, item 4B, we're a public hearing, an interim use permit for Wendy, and I apologize if I butchered the last name, Cisneros?
Cisneros.
Cisneros, thank you. At 716-192 or 192nd Avenue Northeast. Aaron?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the Planning Commission. I'm just trying to get an aerial location here for you, just for visual reference, Viking Boulevard and Highway 65. The subdivision is right here. Property is this one, right here. All right. In late July of 2023, the City of East Bethel received a complaint about a building and zoning code violations at 716-192nd Avenue Northeast. During the investigation, the code enforcement officer discovered that in addition to code violations, there was also a horse on the property. A standard city code enforcement letter was issued identifying the code enforcement issues and requested the property owner contact the city. The property owner, Wendy Cisneros, and her husband came to East Bethel City Hall to discuss the identified code issues with staff. At the conclusion of the discussion, multiple permit applications and the interim use permit application were applied for by Cisneros the following week. Upon review of the building permit applications, it was discovered by the city's residential building inspector that there were construction code-related deficiencies, as well as excessive number of detached accessory buildings, and the IUP requirements for farm, animals, or horse were not met. A subsequent meeting was scheduled with the property owners, and the issues were identified along with a plan to remedy the city's concerns by November 15th of 2023. The applicants completed all the necessary corrections for code violations regarding buildings and detached accessory structures, and an inspection was completed by November 3rd of 2023. The applicants are still requesting an interim use permit to keep one horse on the property. The applicant's property is zoned rural residential and is located in the Brookside Place subdivision, and the lot is 4.86 acres in size. Section 10-15, the interim use permit shows acreage requirements for domestic and non-domestic farm animals. No animal regulated by this article can be kept on a parcel of land located within a platted subdivision or on a parcel of land less than three acres, provided further that if 80% of the lots within a platted subdivision are larger than three acres, an interim use permit for the keeping of a regulated animal may be issued for any of those lots larger than three acres. Brookside Place was platted in 1978 with 10 lots, of which only four lots meet the three-acre or larger requirement. Section 10-152, domestic farm animals, shelter, paddocks, and pasture land. During the November 3rd inspection, staff were able to verify that a minimum requirement of a one-acre horse pasture had already been fenced, which included a 12-by-30 shelter with food, water, which met all of setback distances required by code. Section 10-157, interim use permit required. The keeping of animals regulated under this article will be allowed only after the issuance of an IUP for such keeping. The procedure for an IUP will be in accordance with the city zoning ordinance set forth in Appendix A of this code. The required public hearing will be before the Planning Commission, and the final decision of the IUP will be made by the City Council nor earlier than seven days after the public hearing. Staff recommends the Planning Commission review the IUP request, hold a public hearing, and make a recommendation of approval or denial to the City Council with conditions set forth in the attached resolution. If approved, staff requests the Planning Commission recommend a term of one to three years to determine if a deviation from the city zoning standard defined in Section 10-151C will have an impact on the neighborhood. The applicant is here, and I can also answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Aaron. Seeing this is a public hearing at this time, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Again, anyone wishing to speak on this matter, please step up to the podium, speak clearly into the microphone with your name and address for the record.
Mr. Chair, I am notifying the Planning Commission that I will be recusing from this topic.
All right. Thank you. If there is no one to speak on this at this time, I'll close the public hearing unless someone would like to speak regarding it. Seeing no one speaking, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. I would entertain a motion to approve, deny, or for discussion at this time.
I'll make a motion to open discussion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, all in favor of discussion, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we are in discussion. Okay, if you made the motion.
Yep, yep, yep. I am, I'm just curious, you know, I don't know why I'd consider denying this with the fact that they've gone through all the, you know, I don't know the list of code corrections that were made, but, you know, to drag them along this far to deny, you know, have them meet all the standards. The only thing I see that does raise an eyebrow is how it was platted, and like it says, only four of the 10, so less than 80% meet that.
About 40.
Right, so that doesn't really give me any pause.
My question would just be about precedence, and I don't really remember the details, but there have been some similar ones that have been denied. And so I just, I'm not sure about the fairness of it, of denying some and approving others and what the differences might be. So I don't have a lot to add, but I do question what, how they compare to ones that we've denied.
Yeah.
Similar to both your points, again, I would commend the applicant for, again, doing the efforts of getting things compliant to, you know, to be compliant, to be able to apply, because without, it wouldn't, you know, even if there was an, you know, an application for it, it would be a quicker denial if things were not at least met and brought up to, up to standard from that aspect. But I very much agree with your point, and I know I've been on record multiple times about creating precedent and also in regard to the specific topic with horses where, you know, again, we need to make sure we're being, we're being compliant, because if we allow it here, then it starts to be allowed somewhere else, and we're, again, just continues to kind of snowball and we're to be drawing the line again. So it's not a, exactly an easy topic either. Like I said, I commend them again for going through the efforts, but I do struggle as well with an approval for the fact that, you know, again, it's in an area where it shouldn't be technically at the moment, which is why they're applying and trying to bring it compliant. So I struggle with that, because again, as much as I would love everyone to have what they would like to have, if it doesn't fit the rules, it doesn't fit, so.
I can point out a couple of differences.
Please.
One being that it's, the issue of the horses is not a result, as far as I know, of neighbors complaining about the horses. And then secondly, the property isn't like a development where you're encroaching with the horses upon immediate neighbors. There's all this open space, especially the farther back you go behind the property. It's, it's a lot different than a development where you have these two-and-a-half acre lots right up on each other. So I don't know the identical circumstances of previous ones where it was denied, but I think it had to do with how close neighbors were to it.
Well, would it not be a fair, fair argument to say though that if it's, if it doesn't fit what the rules state, then again, not saying that an amendment to, to the rules would need to be changed down the road, but at the moment, if it's not compliant, that's the part I struggle with, is like I said, is how far do we keep bending it if it's close but not quite there?
So the rules are a guide, and they can't necessarily fit every circumstance that comes before us, and that's why we are here to make discernment of whether it's a legitimate reason to do it or not. I don't see it as a precedent, because you won't have the same condition in the next one perhaps, or the one after that. It's a unique setting of the way the land is situated, and also, again, not being a neighbor complaint-based issuer. The ones that we've had before us have been neighbors that have been disturbed for whatever reasons and bring it to the attention of staff.
And with the public hearing, I mean, there has been no opposition either. I mean, that is one thing that I think is different than some of them we've seen in the past. And have there been any complaints that you know of, other than this zoning complaint?
I don't, I don't know the full details of the original complaint. The code enforcement officer came to me after investigating it, saying, hey, I was there looking at this construction of this building, and there's a horse on this property. Do they have a permit? So that's where I stepped in and kind of facilitated getting the compliance issues taken care of, as well as getting it to the stage where we would entertain an application for a farm animal. Prior to that, with all of the pending code violations, we wouldn't have even entertained the application. That's why it is here today, is because they've gotten themselves compliant with all the other items, so. They've been very cooperative.
Yeah, definitely. Like I said, seems like they're, they're doing their best to comply there. I guess, again, going back to, you know, part of the reason, and Glenn, to counter your, your argument that it's not precedent, I guess to me, it still does kind of fit the precedent, because if, again, very hypothetical, but if the hypothetical landowner behind or to the south of this property were to develop that in a more, more dense, then all of a sudden that is affecting more, you know what I mean? Just because there are a lot at this moment is different, doesn't mean that it wouldn't be in the future that there'd be, again, other.
There is no sewer and water in this location, so the maximum density you'd get is one resident per 10 acres in this rural residential area.
Yep, I'm sorry, I was referencing for precedent though.
I see.
Like I said, if this was, if this wasn't this specific lot, and this was in another area, and someone didn't have building behind it, and we looked at it the same way, but was able to be buildable, would that not then change it? And then the argument to anyone who would be trying to build that development would be, would say, well, at the time, you technically shouldn't have or couldn't have granted it because it didn't fit the profile at that time, and now you've put us in a position where, again, there's something there that should, just from a rule standpoint. So, but again, like I said, I'm empathetic to the situation, but again, I struggle with, like I said, the precedent piece, because far too often do we have this come up, and at what point do we draw the line on where residents need to be sure they're doing their due diligence beforehand on these things instead of always being after the fact?
I will point out that they are lot number three on this plat. They are sandwiched in the four lots that are more than three acres. So if that makes a difference, they're not neighboring a lot that's less than three acres in the 10 for consideration.
Thank you for that.
If it were strictly the matter of the letter of the law, then why is this before us? Why would it not be staff saying, no, you can't do that?
Because an applicant has every right to apply at any time for anything, as we've seen with other, with other items.
Right, but it also, to me, indicates that we have the ability to look at it case-by-case basis and make a decision on the merits of the case rather than the general broad spectrum of the rule.
And I, and I guess that's where I go back to. Again, that's where precedent comes back into play, is then what precedent do we set moving forward?
I'm kind of siding with you, Glenn, about if, if I'm concerned about setting a precedent, it's that we're willing to meet people where they're at versus if it doesn't fit inside this box, you're out. So, I mean, even in this scenario, I mean, it, the property itself, looking at it from Google Maps, it's, it would make sense, you know, that this would be something and, you I think, yeah, that's, that's my take is, I don't think we're setting a precedent for everybody who wants a horse to come in. It's, we're setting a precedent as the Planning Commission that will hear your case, will help decide, you know, if it's reasonable for the city or not. So I understand what you're saying. I come at it from a different angle, and I suppose that's why we're both up here.
Absolutely. Like I said, one man's opinion versus, versus another. And again, and in the end, it's not our final decision either. Like I said, this will go before City Council.
Right.
I can tell you that in the resolution, if you look at the conditions, they, if approved, would have to maintain all other conditions of the IUP. They would be re-inspected annually. If they're found to not be in compliance with any of the issues, we would ask them to remove the horse from the property. This is why I suggested giving them a, potentially one-to-three-year trial period if this is the case, if they are not able to meet the conditions in the one-year timeframe, the two-year timeframe, or the three-year timeframe, or we receive complaints from the neighborhood, we could address those at that point. If that temporary, if you will, expires after one, two, or three years, and there are no issues, I would see that they should be able to come back and apply for one that could go for perpetuity, if you will.
I was just going to ask about that. So when they renew this, do they have to pay a fee each time?
Yes.
And do you know what it is, Aaron?
I believe it's $300.
Each year or each three years, you think?
Per application.
So if we set one year and they have to reapply, that'd be the application fee.
Do they tend to keep the horses behind the tree line or up by the house?
I can tell you that this is the horse shelter. This has a small gated area, if you will. They have already fenced out one acre around this shelter behind this tree line. You cannot see this from the right-of-way on any, any location. It's not visible. The only way you know there's a horse there is there's a horse trailer in the front yard parked on an approved surface, and we had a complaint, we are investigating. Otherwise, we would have never known.
Is that a wetland?
It's not. I don't know if you're interested in hearing from the applicant. She is here. If anybody would.
If anybody would like, if anybody would like to have her come up and speak on it, or do you want to go call for her? Otherwise, I would entertain a motion for, again, approval or denial.
I'm, I'm pretty much in agreement with this, so I don't need to hear from her unless she'd like to come up and speak, but I'm hearing kind of consensus here, I think.
Yeah, I think everybody's going to weigh it in, unless anyone has anything further to add. Certainly, like I said, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to recommend approval of the IUP and the resolution granting an interim use permit for the keeping of no more than one horse on property located at 716-192nd Avenue Northeast, East Bethel.
With a period of how long?
Hmm.
That's also not a necessity. If you don't think that that's a requirement, you can scratch that. If you feel like we should give it a trial period, that's completely up to you. I, I just simply suggest it because the ordinance percentages.
But we don't have to set a, I would prefer not to put a.
You certainly don't.
Then that would be your motion.
Yeah, okay.
I'll second that.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion on it? As we've already discussed, everyone's weighed in. So, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. Motion's granted. This will go before City Council. Is that also the December 11th?
Yes.
Meeting. Moving on, item 4C, another public hearing, preliminary plat and planned unit development, Viking Meadows, 1788 Viking Boulevard, Capstone Homes Incorporated. Aaron?
Yep, just give me a couple of minutes, Mr. Chair. Not even a couple of minutes, a couple of seconds here, I can get, I'll do a, yeah. All right, I'll go back to my couple of minutes.
Yeah. There you go.
I'm going to get to a map here.
Take your time.
There's a few pages. Where'd it go? All right, let's do this instead. Planning Commission, we asked to review the preliminary plat for a mixed-use PUD as requested by Capstone Homes Incorporated. On November 8th, 2023, a preliminary plat and PUD application from Capstone Homes Incorporated for the redevelopment of Viking Meadows was received. The proposal showed the redevelopment of 155 acres of land.
Come on in. Very good.
Which spans across the zoning classifications of mixed-use and single-family residential. The proposal shows 95 acres of developable land will contain a proposed 242 lots. In addition, the proposal contains 60 acres of open space, which also includes over 10 acres of park and rec space. At the June 27th Planning Commission meeting, a public hearing was held, and feedback was provided to the developer on a concept plan proposal. At the July 24th City Council meeting, the concept plan proposal was presented to the City Council for feedback. On August 22nd, a revised concept plan was presented to the Planning Commission, and by a six-to-one vote, a recommendation of approval was forwarded to the City Council. On August 28th, the revised concept and PUD plan was presented to the City Council along with the Planning Commission's recommendation. The City Council unanimously approved the concept plan by Resolution 2023-61. According to City Code, Section 496 of the Development Procedures, mixed-use and single-use projects, the application, procedure, and applicable general requirements pertaining to a planned unit development shall apply to mixed-use districts. Subject to exceptions, modifications, or additions set forth in an ordinance, amendments to the PUD can be proposed and implemented upon approval of the City Council. The application procedure shall include a submittal and approval by the City Council of a concept plan prior to the submittal of a PUD request. According to Section 56, Planned Unit Development, subsection D, a planned unit development is required in mixed-use districts in the city. Mixed-use allows for commercial, residential parks and open space, and as such are in compliance with East Bethel's comprehensive plan. The purpose of a PUD is to allow for flexibility and variation from conventional ordinance standards in exchange for higher standards of development, design, and creativity, architectural control, and natural resource protection, landscaping, public parks, private, and public open spaces, protection, excuse me, open space protection, pedestrian access, and multi-use cars. pedestrian access and multi use corridor opportunities. The PUD provisions are also intended to promote the effective use or excuse me, the efficient use of land and promote cost effective public and private infrastructure systems. As part of the preliminary plat PUD review, staff offer the following comments. Under access, ingress and egress to the development will be accessible from two locations, Sand Hill Parkway Northeast and Viking Boulevard Northeast. The original proposal contained a potential connection at one hundred and eighty ninth Avenue Northeast however. However, after public comment and further discussion, city staff requested this be configured only as an emergency access point. The developer, the city engineer, the public works manager and city staff have met numerous times and are working in conjunction with the Anoka County Highway Department and the Anoka County engineer to develop equivalent to to, excuse me, to evaluate and address the overall traffic considerations of the area. Additionally, an independent contracted study is ongoing and the results are to be presented to the city council and city staff in early December. Under open space, the primary function for a PUD is to encourage development that preserves and enhances the natural characteristics in valuable natural resources of a site and not to force intense development that uses all portions of a given site to arrive at the maximum intensity or density density allowed by code. Capstone has proposed over sixty acres of open space, which includes just over ten acres of a community of community park and recreation space with walking trails and unique landscape buffers. Streets, streets and cul de sacs along with utilities should be constructed in compliance with city code, which requires streets shall provide for future connections to adjoining unsubdivided land. Staff recommends that the streets throughout this development be maintained as public streets. Housing, the amended plan consists of two hundred and forty two new single family homes on a combination of fifty five foot, seventy foot and eighty foot lots. Commercial, the plan includes a fifteen acre commercial outlaw at the intersection of Highway sixty five and Viking Boulevard Boulevard, identified for future commercial space. City services, the plan indicates that the new single family homes will each be connected to city sewer and water as the entire development is within the metropolitan urban service area. Density, the plan consists of an overall density for the proposed developable land that is under three units per acre, which is the citywide density standard based on the twenty forty comprehensive plan for all properties in the MUSA. The Parks Commission met on November fourteenth where the developer presented a preliminary plat parks plan to the Parks Commission. Parks Commission was agreeable to a fifteen hundred dollar fee per lot and the ten point nine five acres of upland recreation space dedicated with park dedication fees asking to be redirected back to the public park improvements within the development. There will be an HOA, according to the plan proposes a homeowners association, which will be responsible for common areas, landscaping along the entrances of Sand Hill Parkway and Viking Boulevard Northeast, as well as maintenance of a point zero seven acre park or utility space. Design standards, the plan calls for minor deviations from our design standards. However, the PUD component provides the city flexibility in allowing for these exceptions. Exceptions will be need to be defined and approved in the PUD developers agreement. The PUD criteria, as part of the approval process, the PUD must demonstrate the public's benefit to the surrounding neighborhoods and the city as a whole. Public benefit includes but is not limited to the following. Preservation and enhancement of desirable site characteristics and open space. There are there are a vast number of wetlands and low areas on the property. The developer will protect and enhance these areas and create additional amenities, amenity areas such as open space and gathering areas and trails. The amenities will be accessible to the public. Once the entire development is completed or built out, trails and open spaces will be connected throughout the development as well as to the adjacent development and other areas. The pattern of development preserves natural resources that significantly contribute to the characteristics of the city. The existing wetlands will be further enhanced to provide open space and accessible trails. Wetland impacts will be mitigated on site. Stormwater management basins will be enhanced by providing additional additional plantings and designings as wet ponds. The design, landscape and architectural features will create a pleasing environment or other special development features. The additional landscaping will be added throughout the site as provided in the landscape plan. Also, areas of the site that are wooded will be preserved wherever possible. Variety of housing types will be available in accordance with the city's housing goals. The development will provide a variety of rambler, multi level, split entry and two story style homes positioned between existing rural residential parcels and complimentary to the adjacent elevage townhome and commercial development. The development is to enhance the local economy and strengthen the tax base. The preliminary plat projected plan would generate a conservative estimate of two hundred and eighty thousand one hundred dollars in annual city property tax revenues at full build out by twenty twenty eight. The city will also collect one million four hundred and thirty one thousand three hundred and sixty dollars in city sack and whack fees over the life of life of the project. This amount would pay off approximately seventy percent of the principal balance of the reserve capacity loan. In addition, the increase in housing units would improve the demographics in the local market area, which are needed to attract to attract basic retail food and grocery services to the city. The proposed preliminary plat PUD meets the intent and criteria for granting a PUD based on city ordinance section fifty six planned unit development. The planning commission is asked to hold a public hearing, review the preliminary plat slash PUD and recommend approval of the preliminary plat PUD to the city council with conditions in the attached resolution for preliminary plat and PUD. The developer, the developer is here to answer questions, I can also answer them. The two addendums that came today were as a result of meetings with the Anoka County Engineers Office multiple times, as well as a little over a two hour meeting this morning between myself, the public works director and the city engineer generating the four page condition letter that was included in your addendum. All of these items, comments on here will be required to be satisfied prior to us issuing any final plat on this project.
Thank you, appreciate that, that was a lot of information.
That was helpful.
Thanks for going through that. As this is a public hearing, this time I will open it up and I do ask anyone who's wishing to speak. Again, please state your name and address for the record as with most of our public hearings. Typically, the format, we will take down what your questions are so we can get through everyone's questions that they may have, we will circle back to try to answer them what we can and then we'll possibly bring up the developer to help answer any of that and then we'll run it through another round of questions if somebody so chooses to ask questions after hearing their answers and then we would close the public here. So with that, anyone wishing to speak, welcome to come to the podium. Please state your name and address and speak clearly into the microphone for those watching online will have a hard time hearing on the cable channel, so.
My name is Keith Sorrella. We own the former insurance agency directly across the street on Viking Boulevard, fifteen thirty five Viking Boulevard Northeast. We're fully in favor of this development, we believe it will enhance the value of our property. That's really all I have to say.
Thank you very much for that, that is always appreciated. Any other comments? Hearing none, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing at this time. At this time, I will entertain a motion for approval denial or for discussion.
Make a motion to open discussion.
We have a motion, sir second. Glenn, second, thank you. We have a motion to discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And we are discussing. Ryder, you open?
Uh, yeah, so I think it's, can we just go to the master map of the project?
Yeah, do you have a page number for me?
It was like forty, not forty six, forty five?
Is this one?
Yeah, we can start with the colored version, just the concept plan.
Forty one.
This would be the parks plan.
So when I was reading through the preliminary plat plan, one of the other maps says that the whole project is R one specified on this one, it has R two. So I guess to start, when when I looked through the R two zoning, there were properties with frontages as low as thirty seven feet, which is a significant departure from what our regulations say. Regulations are eighty feet unless it's a townhome. I think this is gonna lead to a pretty significant issue with snow management. There won't be any areas to put that snow. And if there's no HOA involved in hauling snow, that's gonna be the city responsibility. Another aspect that I'm having trouble with is the forty acres of ponds. It's my experience in the city and seeing other people dig ponds. Ponds fill up really fast around here and this is gonna be the responsibility of the city. So I guess I don't understand how how that's gonna help our city. I mean, forty acres dredging costs are between fifty and a hundred thousand dollars per acre. Our city is not capable of doing that, so that would have to be just farmed out. Guess I just have a list, I'll go down the list. So this is a mixed use and planned unit development. It's not really in compliance with our planned unit and mixed use guidelines that specify twenty percent of the property should be commercially developed. The developer has added Outlet One, which is fifteen acres. That fifteen acres on the corner is all peat and wetland and it's not developable. So I guess that addition directly conflicts with our PUD guidelines that emphasize sustainable development and environmental stewardship. Just for a clear metric, nineteen acres of the developable land should be commercial mixed use. I found multiple setback in frontage violations throughout the project. R one has a minimum frontage of eighty feet and front setback requirement of thirty feet. Proposal has lots with frontages as low as thirty five point six feet and setbacks of twenty five feet. The minimum lot size in an R one zone is eighty two hundred and sixty square feet. Many plats are smaller than this minimum. Location and interconnectivity concerns, the Anoka County engineer provided his assessment. I think the proposed development's limited egress points and insufficient interconnectivity pose potential challenges for traffic flow and accessibility in or contrary to the transportation goals outlined in our comprehensive plan. I saw a number with thirty one point five feet as a width for for the road. When you go from street A into the egress to the cul de sac, there's over a hundred houses on there. Since we don't have the traffic study, best estimate is between seven and ten trips a day. So at that intersection, we're gonna see a thousand cars on a on a residential street. That has a minimum width with with shortened setbacks. I think that will contribute to people trying to back out and getting stuck in their driveways. Because the frontages are shortened, snow piles are gonna be extremely high in this area, limit visibility on a very busy road. The cul de sac is not in compliance with our length requirements. Our guidelines say five hundred feet are allowed. I know we've provided exceptions in rural residential areas. I guess I feel like that was done because they're rural and, you know, we're looking at two acres plus per residential lot. This development is proposing eight times more density. So I guess what that leads to is a risk for emergency response. If anyone parks on the street, it's gonna prevent traffic from flowing. Increased traffic congestion and inefficiency, the longer cul de sacs can contribute to increased traffic congestion, especially during peak hours. This design flaw can lead to longer travel times for residents, difficulty in navigating the neighborhood and overall decrease in the efficiency of the local transportation network. Think this is in contradiction to urban planning best practices. Like to point out that excessively long cul de sacs contradict modern urban planning best practices. Think we'd see that in the traffic report that we do not have, which favors shorter streets and multiple access points to enhance connectivity and mobility. Such noncompliance not only goes against our city's regulations, but also undermines the efforts to create a more livable and well connected community. Lack of the traffic study. Sure, somebody would like to just say, well, you're not a traffic engineer and I agree. But because we don't have the traffic study, like we can't make an informed decision on this. Environmental impact concerns, the proposal to transform extensive land and deep water retention ponds may pose significant environmental risks that could lead to unsustainable maintenance costs and liabilities for the city. I saw in the initial, I guess, description, there's HOA. Unclear how the HOA exists in this development or the management responsibilities. The lack of a detailed HOA plan creates uncertainty about the management of common areas and long term terms sustainability, which is critical for the project's viability. Projects Liberty Home Section appears to be to reflect R two guidelines, yet the planning documents indicate the entire project is R one. R two is allowed where there's HOA to manage communal maintenance requirements such as ponds, snow removal and lawn care. I'd like to see an HOA that describes these financial costs and how it will address them. Based on the frontage and setbacks of the plan, snow plow or a snow maintenance plan probably should be presented. Plan for dredging ponds and a timeline for that should be presented. And then also the Anoka County Traffic Engineer presented the noise area classification issue. This is a state statute. The absence of a commercial buffer zone or barrier on Viking raises concerns about potential noise impact on residential areas necessitating alternative noise mitigation strategies. Those are some of my issues with the development proposal.
That's all?
I had more, but I just.
Appreciate the limitation.
I got a couple down. Can I, I picked one right off the bat. The HOA, is that not something that was proposed by the developer to include and would they not cover snow mitigation and?
I think that that's what Joe's alluding to is that there it's not detailed at this moment, so therefore at least questions, is that a fair statement?
Yeah, I think usually these could be presented in the final plan, but because it's such an important part of this approval and what they're proposing, I think that it's probably warranted to be submitted.
Sure, something to have at least at the final plat. Yeah.
Really, that's based on the shortened frontage and setbacks. That's such an extreme departure from our regulations, it's more than, you know, half of what our guidelines state.
I also, I've got just an ocean of papers here, but they're one of these from either the Anoka County Transportation Division mentioned that they are still waiting on a traffic study, like one is being discussed, is that what's going on?
There's one going on right now.
Sure, okay.
There's a traffic study, there's traffic counters out there, there's all kinds of things happening.
And so a lot of the things that you're talking about, is that going to be discussed and addressed within them as far as?
Gabe, if I if I could, just on that one, again, and Aaron, correct me, but again, if there was a resolution on this, again, I would think it would be in the in the comments that any recommendations from city city staff and engineering would have to be addressed, so therefore something came up in the traffic study, then it would have to potentially be addressed.
So if you look at the November twenty sixth letter from the Anoka County Transportation Department, they're not gonna allow us to issue any permits to any developer on anything in this until they approve all of their comments in this letter. But regardless of how many pages our comments are. But regardless of how many pages our comments are, they're not even gonna be able to address them until they address all of these.
Yeah.
So, so that encompasses Viking Boulevard, the intersection, uh, at Viking Meadows and there. They also indicated here that they wanna see the traffic study results. Like, none of this is gonna move forward.
Without that any.
Yeah. We're not gonna issue a, a, a final plat until this is satisfied and all four pages of this is clear.
So it's a, so it'd be a fair statement to say anything that we're working with tonight is with the assumption that these items being taken care of anyway, so in an effort of time and energy, let's focus on, I think we should focus on what we have and moving forward with the assumption these things to be taken care of as they would not be allowed otherwise.
Most of the reason I even bring it up is just to respond to what you had mentioned as far as your concerns that they are being addressed. It, you know, I, all of this is partial hieroglyphics to me, so, you know, looking at it, it's, you know, at least eases my mind on some of your concerns.
Well, I, I don't like to assume, um, that both of the engineers had a hefty list of issues that should be addressed. And I think that we'd be premature in approving this until some of those issues are addressed. Some of them are very large. I don't think that they're small issues that should just get passed. I don't see a, an issue with potentially tabling this and letting the developer catch up with the requirements of this plan, but the concept plan is a different level than the approval of preliminary plat. Preliminary is much further down. And, and offers a lot more legal rights to the developer, and I don't think we're there yet because the plan isn't complete. We're miss, we're missing the traffic study. If it isn't on, we don't have a road commission anymore, so now we're gonna, we can't pass that to the council unless that's what we wanna do. I think we have to have a hand in at least looking at that and providing a recommendation. Again, I, I try to keep my opinions out of this. These are the guidelines, the regulations in our, our one ordinance, guidelines, regulations, if you will.
But I don't think it's, I don't think it's assuming if, again, if it's clearly stated that nothing would be approved without conditions being met. So that, therefore, it's not an assumption at that point. So that's where I was just, again, trying to help narrow the list to keep moving forward with concerns so we can still have a timely meeting.
Sure, yeah.
I'd like to say, you know, Joe, I think actually you have some, some valid concerns. Um, and we've taken minutes of the, um, of the meeting and I think those concerns can be passed on. But those are things that are gonna be, um, in any typical development. And there's lots of professionals that are working on this. So I personally don't see a reason to slow it down, but I do think that your concerns are valid and, and should be addressed.
And then if the developer can address, definitely address some of it, so we can bring them up tonight if we needed to, uh, when we get to that point. Uh, but they'll also be, again, we're not the final say in, in these things too. Again, it's part of our job as an advisory committee to make sure we're doing our due diligence, yes, to go through, make best recommendation as, as we see it. So the city council can make that final decision on, on how they wanna look at it. Uh, you know, again, the road thing, I guess that, to me, I feel it's going to be addressed where it is here. Uh, I have some of my own opinions on some of these items that you brought up, but again, we have the developer here who is, seems to be willing to respond to some of that.
Well, I'd like to hear your opinion. I mean, I, I'm just trying to base mine off guidelines and things that are clearly observable.
Yep, and I was just.
Like, I'd be very concerned about having my kids run around the neighborhood with that much traffic. Like, a parkway or, you know, a two-lane boulevard with a median in the middle? That might be more reasonable than a single two-way street with a thousand trips per day at one inter. That's only in the middle, like, we're looking at a right-hand turn-only egress, which we probably wanna prevent because that's gonna be sent over to Greenbrook. And that's, now, I, so I, I think the comments from the, the city council that, well, why would we look at what's going on at Viking over by the fire department? That's so far away, while this development is sending traffic over that way by design because they can only have a right-in, right-out egress on their secondary access point. The other one on Sand Hill is probably gonna be where everyone goes because no one's gonna wanna turn right. And I guess that's my assumption, they're gonna wanna go out and get to the highways. So we're looking at potentially twenty-seven hundred cars per day coming out and going into that intersection, which seems pretty excessive to me. It seems unreasonably excessive.
Just to note, uh, the city does have an obligation to improve the intersection at Sand Hill Parkway and Viking Boulevard by the end of twenty-twenty-five. As part of the connection with that project, we signed a, a joint agreement that we would, uh, not necessarily reconfigure, but add an additional bypass lane and some other items, uh, to that intersection based on the requirements of the county engineer to make that safe enough for traffic. So that is part of what is coming out of this and is also mentioned in the comment letter from, um, the traffic engineer from the county that a plan's in, has to be in place and, and has to work simultaneously. So there is some obligation on the city to get that done as well within this comment letter, so.
I guess, based on what all we have here, I appreciate Capstone coming up and addressing what they feel they're able to. On your concerns, unless there are other concerns people wanna bring up before we have him go into that said list.
I, I'd like to, um, add to my concern about the length of the cul-de-sac without any other option other than going halfway through the development to exit.
So can I ask which cul-de-sac we're referring to? Because there are a number of them in there, and some of them are future access roads that only have temporary cul-de-sacs and, and our ordinance allows for them to be dead-ended at undeveloped property. So I'm, I'm not sure which one you're referring to.
Anything south of, uh, City Park?
If I may?
Yes.
Street H, it's the one that's all the way at the end? At the very back end of the property?
Down here? Yep, so that is a temporary cul-de-sac.
Right, so both of those are temporaries.
Are we talking about, question? We're talking about?
Is that gonna be a road then?
Our ordinance requires that if there's undeveloped land, that it has to be made available for a future connection. So that is a temporary cul-de-sac by the plan.
Right, so when we're talking about the limitation of five hundred feet, I mean this, Joe's point, clearly this is beyond that. So my question is, do we give it a pass because we know that it's gonna be connecting to another development?
I think you guys would remember when we, uh, explored the Bear Hollow, uh, request for a variance from the gentleman in Oak Grove. That Bear Hollow, uh, street that ends in a cul-de-sac is well over a mile. And there's future extension built in for that one that probably will never happen. We have over two hundred cul-de-sacs across the city, and I would venture to say, I guess I can't put a number on it, in my conversations with the Public Works Director, there's a bulk of them that if we measured, probably don't meet our ordinance. Just based on the way the land is laid out, the way, how, how development happened and those kinda things. So this is not uncommon to have a cul-de-sac or a, a street that ends on undeveloped property be longer than what the ordinance says. According to the.
The missing variable is the density. This is very dense and I think.
And I can put a.
Page forty-two or.
Go ahead.
Packet page forty-two has a better map.
Forty-two. So I can also point out that we have requested that, that Hundred and Eighty-Ninth be an emergency access point only. So if there were a tornado or a storm or the storm of the century and people were blocked off from getting this way, our fire department or our sheriff's office would have access to be able to allow traffic to escape in an emergency through this route onto Hundred and Eighty-Ninth to at least leave the area on a temporary basis till we could get the road reopened as a contingency plan or emergency plan. Not that that would be open all the time. They, the developer and the city have requested that there be some form of barrier put up. And the developer has actually proposed multiple barriers, one on Hundred and Eighty-Ninth as well as at the intersection of the main road coming through. We were only asking for Hundred and Eighty-Ninth at that location. So they're providing extra security, if you will, so that cars can't get through there. So that is a alternative to until that undeveloped land to the south and to the east potentially becomes developed for emergency access that would be identified by public works, law enforcement, or a fire. And they would be the ones that would have access to opening the gate ballards, whatever happens to be put there as a deterrent uh, to allow traffic to evacuate.
Can you remind me as to why we did not want to have that continued?
So that is a gravel stretch, uh, and when we had the concept plan here, uh, there was enough, um, feedback from the neighborhood that the city decided, uh, to request that that not be allowed to be a connection street. There would need to be an upgrade, there would need to be maintenance, there would need to be a lot of extra, um, items that we felt the pushback from the neighbors in the neighborhood was warranted and, um, we could make it so that it is emergency only.
It'd also have to be a stoplight put on Greenbrook, there's a blind corner over there.
Yeah, that was also another consideration is the corner is, is very, very difficult to, would, to, to navigate to get back out on Greenbrook from that location if, uh, the volume of traffic was traveling that way. But of course, in an emergency situation, we can stop traffic and allow cars to evacuate if need be.
Can I, um, can I touch on another one of your concerns, Joe, about the, uh, commercial development within the, um, land usage here? Now, I, I think it might have been from the August twenty-eighth city council meeting where, um, I believe it was Jack made some comments on this about Outlot One here on the northwest corner. Is that something that has been discussed more extensively? As far as, you know, it, it's been left for this reason, I believe.
There's eighteen acres of peat there, it's all wetland.
Right, okay.
I've done digging on the other side.
Yeah.
My family helped put in the East Bethel City sign. That peat's seventeen feet deep.
Sure.
And so in order to make that.
Eighteen acres of no good land.
It's, that was, that's never gonna get developed.
So I can tell you, I can, I can, uh, I can let you know that, uh, before two thousand and eighteen, QuickTrip was pretty, uh, intent on building their location at this site, and they had started working on a plan where they could, uh, create some sort of convenience store or C-store on the available property that's in that upper right-hand corner on there. Now, whether that would have ever come to fruition and they ended up with a better deal down the road, I don't know the ins and outs of that. I was not here in two thousand and eighteen, but that's what I've been told by those who are in the know.
They obviously bailed on it and built in another spot. And then their plans actually were hampered due to the peat deposits behind there. They were gonna do a diesel.
You don't know why.
I do know that, I do know that that's what happened.
But that's not relevant to what the.
Thank you.
The Outlot is at this point, that's.
I do have a question about that fifteen acres then too. If, if there were to be some commercial businesses there, about how many businesses could go in fifteen acres, do you think?
Depends on how big the business is.
At least one more Dollar General.
Yeah, that would be nice.
Um, I mean, we do have design standards or lot sizes for our commercial development. I would have to pull up our zoning code.
Aaron, will you look that up?
Yeah.
If the body is acceptable with it, uh, will he look that up? Are we okay having the developer come up and address some of the other concerns that?
That's good.
We've had come up, please?
So with the availability of sewer and water at that location, because there will be sewer and water there, uh, twenty-three thousand square feet is a quarter of an acre in size. So conceivably, quarter of an acre per fifteen divided by.
Sixty.
There you go. Not that it would ever happen that way, but if you could somehow sardine them in there.
Yeah.
And it was supported by soils and all the other things, then.
But it, it could be considerable.
Get a big enough shovel.
You know, the, the remediation, uh, as Joe was alluding to for peat and wetlands and all those things requires state permitting. Uh, there's no way to know a final answer just without any soils research or any uh, application, if you will, to the panel, whether that could even happen or not. But according to other documents, there is high ground in there that could be built. Something could be built on it. To what extent, I don't know.
It's about two-point-three acres.
It's a Dollar General.
Please.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, Aaron, thank you for the presentation. That was, um, there was a lot of information. I think before I really dive in, I think some of the questions that you brought forward might be answered a little bit through a little bit of the history of where we've been over the last eight months. So I think maybe I'll just start by, um, by just going back and recapping just to touch. When this project first came forward, uh, back in, uh, June, this actually encompassed, uh, another thirty acres of parcel of land and was, was much denser in its original design. And it had almost three hundred and fifty homes. Uh, that was the beginning of our conversation when we did our public hearing back in June. Uh, we heard a lot of feedback and as we've mentioned, we like to work with these cities that we come into to make sure that the community or the neighborhood that we're, we're bringing forward matches what the city's entire design and idea is. So a lot of back and forth in that original discussion, and, uh, we came back with the revised plan. That also gave room for even more discussion. And then we finally got to what you see in front of you now, which removed thirty acres and then also changed all of the, um, the density to match R-one. Or the other, uh, comment, uh, regarding R-one is mixed use, which mixed use is what the main part of this encompasses. And in mixed use, you include R-one, R-two, and business. So the main portion of this now, as it was presented in concept, is that portion that is mixed use, which has the R-one and R-two standard in it. So I, I think that touches on one of your comments or questions was, why is it saying R-one? It actually is R-one and mixed use. And what that did is that meant that we had to follow the standards of R-one and R-two, which, uh, took our lot sizes from what we originally proposed, which were forty-foot lots and sixty-five-foot single-family lots. We had to increase those to meet the R-one and R-two standards. So R-one is an eighty-foot lot, which is the area that is in the middle, that orange color here. So that, uh, color is where the R-one lots are, and those are eighty-foot. And then the other part of the proposal that was approved is the mix of seventy-foot single-family lots and then the smaller Liberty single-family homes, which are the detached single-family, like, those are on a fifty-five-foot lot. So that all follows within the R-two standard. We had a lot of discussion on exactly how that worked when we were coming forward with the concept and wanted to make sure that that was really clarified. We didn't wanna go through this next process of bringing a preliminary plat, there's a lot of dollars invested in that without making sure that that was understood. So a lot of back and forth through that, that got us through to the council's approval, um, that was back in, uh, August. As soon as that council approval happened, that triggered for us, uh, weekly meetings with the city staff, which I just wanna say thank you to Aaron, to Jack, to Nate, and then also meeting with the city engineers, Craig. They've been phenomenal, they've done a great job of, uh, helping us understand the city and the, the needs of the city and under, understanding the ordinances. It's, there's a lot of code to really dig into. So we went through weekly meetings to really dive into exactly how this concept needed to get changed into actual lots, streets, stormwater protection systems and everything else. So we've been working on that now for, uh, almost two months, meeting weekly, but also meeting with Anoka County. Uh, we've met with our, uh, with the different wetland bodies to make sure that we're following all of our wetland responsibilities. There was a, one of the comments in Anoka County about the NIHs. We've, we've done that, um, that study, which it really looks for endangered species or any other concerns. We've had that completed. So there's been a lot of work just to make sure that what we showed you and what you approved as a concept is what is coming before you right now. So your preliminary plat is a match for that concept, literally, right, match for match. The only thing that really did change was as we got into stormwater development. So as you're looking at stormwater, where does the water runoff go and how is it treated as it goes through ponds? And, um, and here there's a ditch system, a private ditch system that's been created, how is all that managed? When we started to really dig into the engineering of that, it caused us to kinda have to make some shifts in the pond layout, which ended up becoming to the advantage of the city. It gave us the ability to, uh, add additional park space that we could donate to the city as a part of the park plan that was presented. And, um, a little bit of work with Nate and the Park Commission, and we thank them for kinda looking at this as a bigger picture. There's now ten acres of park space, um, that's going to come to the city. It's actually over one of the greens, it's a really nice area, as well as the dedicated, um, more, uh, active recreational park space as well. So I wanted to come through that park to kinda navigate. So I wanted to come through that park to kinda navigate toward the HOA comes into, to place. One of my responsibilities with Capstone is our HOAs, we have about twelve of them that are currently operating with a lot of our developments. So we're very familiar with the importance of making sure the HOA sustains the community well. And we work with top-notch management teams to make sure that that happens. In this community, there is a lot of great, um, space on Viking Meadows, or excuse me Viking Boulevard and on Sand Hill Parkway that's gonna remain, there's some great trees along Viking Boulevard that will remain. There's also wetland and tree structure along Sand Hill that will remain. What we're intending to do is then enhance that a little bit more to make the entrances look really nice, have a nice finished landscaping there. That's then also maintained all along Sand Hill Parkway. So there's gonna be a nice, really welcoming component to that, that requires the HOA to maintain that. Once you come into the community, these are all single-family homes, so there's not, uh, snow service or a lawn service for individual lots, they're single-family homes. So they're maintaining their own lots, their own driveways. But we do have some recreational private space that we've kept and it's seven tenths of an acre, I think, just a correction there, that's that space that's in the middle of this Liberty community. And that just gives some additional open green space for them to take care of. So that's gonna be irrigated, it's gonna be landscaped, it's gonna be mowed. So you'll have those different spaces that are gonna be common to the whole entire community that will be maintained. And then on top of that, the architectural component that comes with an HOA, that's really critical to make sure that there's some standards in the community that are kept. And we have, uh, just a list of things that we put into our requirements for our community that really help keep the character of the community up. They somewhat help the city with enforcement, cause we're, we're kinda looking at some of the same things that the city's looking at in terms of how our community is kept. So that's some of the HOA components, but it's, it's all gonna be managed by a HOA management company. So you're gonna have that relationship that the city can work with directly. And then they're also gonna be working with us directly with our homeowners. So there's a great partnership there and that HOA structure is, is really sound within our company. So, um, so that maybe ticks off a little bit of the question about the HOA. Um, I wanted to kinda just jump back to, um, when you get into the R-one and R-two standards, there's a setback differential between R-one and R-two. So there's thirty-foot setbacks in R-one, you have twenty-five-foot setbacks in the R-two. So that answers the question about the twenty-five foot. The other comment was about narrow lots and there are, um, at the curb, there are narrowing on radiuses. So as you go through a cul-de-sac, you have a pie shape that shows up. So you're gonna get a real narrow front to the lot, but that's not the setback. The setback line is what's critical. At the setback line, you're still gonna have a fifty-five-foot lot, you're gonna have a thirty-five-foot lot with ten-foot side setbacks. And that'll be the same through the other areas that have seventy-foot lots. You're always gonna have that front line, it's gonna move, it's what you have to look towards is the setback line, that's the one that the code.
What I, what I can mention, uh, Matt, is that our code, which we've, um, looked at in the Stranland Farms, Stranland Farm development is there's no language in the ordinance that requires cul-de-sac lots to have frontage. It's only the straights that are required to have the frontage. However, at the setback line, the building setback line, there is a requirement on the cul-de-sac lots. So that allows for that flexibility within the, within the ordinance.
Where's that specified?
You have to look up cul-de-sacs in the ordinance, I can take a look if you'd like, me too.
Not right now.
It's in our s- street, uh, design standards, cul-de-sac, if I remember correctly.
Yeah, I, I have, um, I can answer any other questions that come up, I think the last comment was about the, uh, traffic study. And, uh, part of our meetings over the last several months have been at Anoka County, trying to figure out exactly how they wanna see their highway managed, that's Viking Boulevard. So there's a lot of questions and, um, just directed to how they wanna see access onto Viking Boulevard's managed, um, and, um, then controlled. So that's where their comments came back stating they wanted to make sure that the joint powers agreement that the city and the county have on Sand Hill is followed through by two thousand twenty-five. But then also there, they had some initial comments that came to us that, um, directed towards the right-in, right-out on Viking Boulevard and moving traffic to Sand Hill Parkway because Sand Hill Parkway had just been developed and expanded to manage traffic. So that Sand Hill Parkway became kinda the focus is to move traffic both to Viking Boulevard, cause that's a full intersection, that'll be there at Viking Boulevard. But then also to move them to the south at a hundred and eighty-ninth, which, those are all intersections that are being studied by this, um, traffic study. And we're very confident that that study is gonna come back with, um, supporting evidence that there's not going to be a negative impact here. That there's been so much of an improvement and there's also continued planned improvement, um, for a lot of those areas that are really gonna help buffer some of the traffic concerns. But that report is coming and it'll be in front of the council for them to see and, and review as they, they get into the, their review of, of the project.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Absolutely. Willie, look here, any other comments for the developer?
Thank you.
I do have one quick question, I, I'm, I'm wondering where the discrepancy is because when listening to your concerns, you stated that a majority of these R-one lots were not in compliance with what our ordinance put out.
Correct.
Where Matt here just said that they're all in compliance. So what information were you given or basing that concern on?
Aaron has it up right here.
Perfect.
And respectfully, I disagree with the developer's opinion.
Sure. So.
Are these the setbacks?
Uh, yep.
So you have a setback, is this R-one?
This is the R-one single-family zone.
Okay, scroll along. So this, so these, um, tables basically show minimum lot sizes, front yard setbacks, and then lot, lot frontages. And so right here, you can see the, from the principal structure in the front yard, you have a thirty-foot setback. And then in the R-one zone, there's twenty-five-foot setbacks. So there's, I guess that was been loosely interpreted to mean throughout the, the mixed use has variable setbacks, even though the R-one is zoned R-one and the R-two is specifically R-two. And then can you go to the, the frontages?
You want me to look at what, sorry?
Just the frontages, that should be on the same. Our, I feel like our city is already providing a major concession on the frontages requirement, fifty-five is excessive. It's specified as eighty in here, unless it's a townhome.
So can you clarify to me what the frontage actually is? Is that distance from the street to the property, to the home?
From one corner of the lot to the other on the street.
Okay. So.
And so I, I, I think a couple of years ago, there was a discussion about putting six lots on a cul-de-sac and exceeding the guidelines and now there's an issue with snow maintenance, dump trucks have to go over there and haul snow out, cause there's nowhere to push it. We're gonna have that situation on every one of these cul-de-sacs. You can go to preliminary plat, plan four of twenty-six, I think it's, packet page forty-five or forty-six? Being the next one? No, maybe we're going the wrong way.
Forty-five?
Yeah, that's that one, need to zoom into nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two. So nineteen has thirty-five point six foot frontage on the road. Thirty-seven point eight, thirty-seven point eight, thirty-seven point eight, thirty-nine point nine. These all exceed our guidelines by long ways.
Frontage is measured at the setback, what's not accurate?
Thank you.
Where are those numbers in here? How can we, how can we affirm that? They're still not gonna be eighty feet. They're still not eighty feet.
We need all of them. We have the setback, the way it's supposed to be measured, uh, according to the ordinance, we'll provide that.
It, sir, just for the record and for those who are at home, if you would like to just come upstate who you are and why it'd be relevant, that'd be appreciated or?
I'd, I'd prefer, yeah.
Jump up.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, just to clarify, and we're happy to, um, to provide the feedback. Uh, as the, the code states, the frontage is measured at the setback line, which is where the cursor is. And at the setback line, that's where we are meeting either the fifty-five, the seventy, or the eighty-five, eighty-foot lot width, which has the ten-foot side setbacks and the actual pad dimension to it.
So again, for anyone looking at this that's not familiar, the number that you're seeing is at the curb versus where the code is saying at the setback line is the greater distance where it is compliant.
So.
Am I stating that correctly?
Correct.
Thank you.
So very specifically, these would qualify as R-two detached, single-family. And that means that this whole part of the project is controlled by an HOA.
That is correct, this is in the mixed-use zoning, which is R-one, R-two business and all of those zonings are covered in mixed use. So in this area, yes, we are using the R-two component as we're looking at the mixed-use zoning guidelines. And that is where you see here, these are the smaller detached, single-family lots.
I'm trying to be really clear, you can't mix and match what you're doing, take the R-one rules and apply them to the R-two inconvenient. R-two.
We are not doing that. I, I, I'd like to clarify, we are not doing a mix and match, we are using R-two standard for the detached, single-family, we're using R-one for the R-one homes. So I'm just clarifying that comment.
No, I appreciate the clarification on that. The other, the other overarching component is the planned unit development standards allow for design flexibility.
For more desirable elements. And so I guess that would be up to the city council to determine.
That's an interpretation, that's correct. I can, I did wanna bring up though, that another planned unit development in our city that was approved, um, a few years back was the Viking Preserve. And this is certainly, uh, land that is in a very similar, uh, location in the Musa area. And, uh, you can see the density that was, uh, achieved and allowed in that planned unit development. I just wanna point that out, that there are, there's, the design flexibility is allowable. The council has to help define what those standards are.
Yep.
Which again, kinda goes back to the whole purpose of a PUD to begin with, which is why it's a compromise. Correct? Yes. Thank you.
I mean, I think that's really the big, basic point, is it's a PUD.
Correct.
And there's flexibility.
If I can just make one comment to that point too, one of the discussions when we went through concept was that we actually are not seeking flexibility. Our goal was to meet the R-one and R-two standards with our plan. And so our, our hope was to actually have a plan that was conducive to the current zoning standards of R-one and R-two throughout the entirety. But we wanted also to make sure to create the transition from elevated with a dense townhome community to a little bit, um, a little bit more unique detached, single-family, and then go to your R-one size lots as it came and abutted the rule. So that transition was given consideration, but the flexibility that we, we have in our, in our application is, is not for lot widths or any like that. We're following, as you read through your code, the R-two standard, R-one standard, depending upon where they are within the mixed use or within the R-one zoning that's standalone.
No, thank you for that clarification.
Really smart.
Thank God.
Any further discussion points? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve or deny.
I do wanna say I do appreciate, uh, the amount of effort you put into this, Joe. Where a lot of this, like I said, a lot of it goes over my head and I rely on, you know, your comments, the developer, everybody here showing me what's going on, so. Yeah, I'm, I'm glad you're as discerning as you are.
I wanna make it really clear, I'm not against development of this property, but I think this is seriously overdevelopment, exceeding our guidelines multiple ways. Gets us going in the wrong direction on our comprehensive plan and our mixed use. We're gonna be giving up nineteen acres of commercial space on a, on a road that we just built, it would be perfect for it. Putting way too many houses, community except for like one or two people that are showing up, that I'm seeing, calling me. Community is really against this development in its current form, everyone's saying it's excessive. So I guess it's up to the city council to make that decision. I make a motion to recommend the denial of this plat proposal.
There's a motion on the floor, is there a second for denial? Hearing none, that motion fails. Is there a different motion?
I'll make a motion to recommend approving the preliminary plat of Viking Meadows for the properties legally described as in the resolution.
All second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion before we go to the vote?
So if, when, if or when this gets built out, at what point will the parks be transferred to the city?
Um, it's my understanding that as the development progresses, the park system will match the areas that go and, uh, the city will just, um, take those over as they're finished off. So I'm assuming infrastructure's gonna come in, they're gonna put in the main roads, uh, and then start in different locations. I guess the developer hasn't really discussed, uh, an overall plan. I'm assuming something this large is gonna be phased. And so if there's a park or a space, they're, they're gonna need, um, soil from some of these areas that are defined in the plan as wetlands to build up other sites that are maybe lower, uh, or to, to level out the field. So I assume some of the green space will get, uh, the soil will get removed and, and moved, so that'll be finished off well in advance, cause they need the material. But, uh, I can certainly.
Okay, so if that's the case, then what we're looking at is that these parks would be developed or at least the ponding will have been developed, uh, before it gets turned over to the city. And then it would be the city's responsibility for the upkeep and, um, adding any other additions to the parks, say, equipment and so forth.
Yep, and the, and the Parks, uh, Commission has, um, agreed to fifteen hundred dollars per house. Um, and then that money can be put into the parks budget to be reused back in the community for upkeep, maintenance, uh, additions, other amenities within the, within, well, actually, citywide, but specifically in this community. There is a, there is a private HOA managed green space that the city won't have access to do anything in. Then that's gonna be maintained by the developer or the property management group that's dealing with the HOA. So that one's not available for any city functions, but will be open to the public, from my understanding. We're not, they're not gonna tell anyone who's not from the neighborhood to go away. Uh, but then the other outlots on your plan will be turned over to the city, the city's responsibility.
Thank you.
Right, it looks like the developer had something to add to that if you'd like.
If you'd like, then I'm open to hearing any comments you'd like to make.
Yeah, I just wanna, uh, you know, thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. The, the plan is definitely to have a phased development, it's, it's significant in size. So we'll, we'll, we will be working our way through and, and exactly as you said, as we get to components or por- portions of the development, whether it's trails or additional stormwater protection systems, those outlots will then, uh, come forward in final plat. And some of those will come to the city of their park space or, um, stormwater systems, others will just stay within our own plating for homes or whatever may be the purpose. So, so that will happen as phases. We haven't really defined, we gotta get through this step first of getting a preliminary plat approved. And then we'll start working on what our, our phasing will look like as we go through, so, thank you.
And I guess I'd.
I'd like to submit my comments and notes for the record, cause I'm sure people are gonna be looking for them.
Yeah, that's your formal written comments then, that was putting proposing up here?
Correct.
Okay. That will be writ- written into the record?
We'll have it transcribed and added as an attachment.
We could just copy it and be fine with me.
Yep, thank you. Um, I guess I'd also, again, put in my two cents as well, uh, you know, from, from the comments I, I hear, from my impression, I don't see this as as being overdeveloped. I know that there are a lot of residents who've been asking for, um, you know, some commercial, commercial businesses to come, come in and it's been a common, common phrase over the last fifteen, twenty years. I see this as an opportunity to help and continue to bring those, those here, you know, again, what comes first? You know, again, commercial, residential. The reality is, is it's not one or the other, it's, they work in conjunction with each other. And again, this is one step at a time to get there, we don't always get to, to pick and we don't always get to decide who, who wants to move forward with things. So again, this is a, this is a big project, I would not argue that in the least, is it important? Absolutely, should we be doing our due diligence?
Should we be doing our due diligence? I think that's exactly what we have been doing. But, uh, like I said, my personal comment is I don't see this as overdevelopment. I think the developer's done an excellent job being amenable to, uh, the city, the comments from the residents and trying to work well within, within the code, especially when again, they could have came in and been extremely dense in some of these areas. And I think they've done a, a stand-up job trying to be agreeable to, do all things to try to encompass as much as they can here, so.
Can we at least ask or recommend a fiscal impact study? Cause I think that a lot of these decisions and recommendations are being driven on the whack and sack opportunity here. And I see a, a lot of liabilities in this with those ponds and pond maintenance. The insurance on the ponds, what happens if a kid falls in, drones, who's responsible for that since it's city-owned property? The, the snow removal and hauling. I, I think those are valid concerns that, you know, $258,000 in tax revenue for the city and a $1.3 million whack and sack might not justify. I, I really do feel like the fiscal impact of what's being proposed is going to be very significant on our city. And so if, if that's the consideration, um, I'd like to recommend that those, those two things at least be recommended. Fiscal impact and, um, I mean, the pond's 40 acres. We should do ecological impact study. There's wells on the south side, rural wells.
And that, the developer's already done environmental assessments. I have four or five of those in my, uh, plans. If you want to come take a look at them, I'd be more than happy to share them. The city engineer has reviewed them all. The county engineer will review them all before anything moves forward.
Yep.
I'd be more than happy to share that with you. Thank you. And, and again, like, like all of our comments, I would hope the city council, again, as we are an advisory board, to them that they are, you know, not only just hearing from our liaison, but in doing their due diligence as well. And if you've got your comments and well-written in, I hope that they'll take those into whatever consideration that they so choose to. As we do with the information we get from the public hearings, the developers as well. So we all do the best job we can with the information we have based on our own interpretations of it, so. And as will they. So, any other comments or discussions? Are we ready to call for a question? All right, all those in favor of the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
One nay. Eyes have it. This will go before, also on December 11th?
I believe so.
And then we have this other one, the approving of the planned unit development of Viking Meadows.
Oh, thank you. So, I believe we need another motion.
Anybody? Okay, I will make a motion.
Thank you.
Uh, for, to recommend approving the planned unit development of Viking Meadows for properties legally described as in the resolution. It's a long description.
Yes, as described.
Yes.
There's a motion for the resolution. Is there a second?
All second.
Thank you, Gabe. Motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I would just like to say that the purpose of the planned unit development in section one, item B, a pattern of development which preserves natural vegetation, topographic and geologic features. The plan is proposing to dig up 40 acres of sand, move it to the other side of the property. Uh, the tree plan basically leaves seven of the, the old grow trees on the property. So there's going to be a complete clear cutting. That's what it looks like according to the map. There might be some outer, outer trees that are preserved, but I'd just like to be very clear that that goes against the guidelines and the PUD.
That has been noted. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Eyes have it. Again, I believe this is also for December 11th. Yeah, the planned unit development is required within the mixed use, so they have to go hand in hand when they come together. So it's just one, the chicken had to come before the egg in this case, instead of the egg before the chicken. Thank you, everyone, for your time, energy, and efforts. All right. Council update. Councilmember DeRouche?
He's smiling, a happy man tonight.
Yeah. It's time for my grandson to say.
Yeah.
Now we're putting him in the mood.
Always beautiful.
Evening.
Evening.
Good evening.
Uh, well, last night we tabled the schedule adoption, fee schedules. Um, there were increases.
Thank you.
I had asked, you know, what, what drives the increase in the fees? Simple one would be installing a water heater went from 50 to a hundred dollars. Why did that jump? And there's several of them that we need to go through and justify why, why these fees are jumping so much on some of the simpler things that the homeowners are trying to do to maintain their house. And they have to get done. Uh, we did approve two probationary period, uh, on-call firefighters. So they went through all their training and whatnot. Uh, we agreed to hire another one. Gentleman put in his, uh, request for application for he spilt the fire. And that's good because everybody knows our fire department's been dwindling rather rapidly. So the more interest we can draw, uh, we're still looking at how can we pay them more? Rather than some of the amenities that are taken care of during the year that are more wants than needs. And my personal thought is EMS, fire department, sheriff's department. People are willing to pay, especially if it, if they've had to use one of those services and they know what can really happen. Um, purchase of playground equipment for Coon Lake Beach, that's great. You know, I've been there 40 years, never seen an improvement. In fact, we've always gotten the has-beens from Booster Park. Um, skateboard park was, used to be up here. So there's been a big investment. Um, Councilman Miller went on, actually found a grant for a hundred thousand dollar match. And so now the park commission's kind of been geared that way to go after grants. Um, I know our new city administrator, um, he's really in tuned out. Who do you got to contact the legislature and whatnot to see if maybe we can get some help with our sewer water fiasco? Can we or not? I don't know, but at least we got to try. And nobody's really made that. Uh, planning commission, we did do the conditional use permit that you guys approved for Matt's plumbing. So that's a go-ahead for him. I think it's great that we got these people coming in and wanting to do stuff. Beats an empty building, right? Other than that, um, I don't think we have a meeting before Christmas, do we?
December 11th, planning commission? No.
No.
Well, then, uh, wish your buddy Merry Christmas. Be safe. Take care of your family. You don't know how long you're going to have them.
You as well.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, item 5B, other business. Randy Blazan said, uh, some comments he wanted to make tonight.
Yeah, thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to, uh, state that, um, it's been my commitment over many years to support our city to the best of my ability. And centered on that principle is my absolute dedication to principles and ethics. And I've been very clear that I would not compromise on any perception that would cross that line. It has become clear to me that I can no longer allow my name to be involved with conduct that in my view is detrimental to the principles I hold dear. Therefore, I hereby humbly submit my resignation from the planning commission effective immediately. And I will continue to have an open door to support our city. I just want to say that, um, it's been an honor and, um, I want to thank all the residents, um, for the opportunity to serve. And that's it. Thanks.
Well, if I, if I may, Randy, the, the thanks goes back to you. Your, your time and dedication, at least from what I've known in the last 15 plus years into the city is, you know, not gone unnoticed.
Oh, thank you.
And I can't say enough good, good things about you and your time and that, uh, I would like to not accept that resignation, but that is not my call. I'd wish you the best of luck in any and all endeavors moving forward and still hope to see you around from time to time.
And I'll say this distresses me a lot. I'm very sorry to see you go also. I don't know what to say. I just distressed.
If there's nothing else, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Well, I just want to say, you know, we don't always agree on things, but I do, um, do find your insights, um, good. And I, I do feel like you are committed to your own principles and, you know, you're not self-motivated. But, you know, I, I do appreciate you, even though we don't agree on, on many things.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, Randy.
It's a little bit off the wall, but I had wanted to say sometimes when you've brought up rules of order and such, when we table something, it means that we're putting it away for a later time. But in the Roman period, table meant to present the topic. And that has probably nothing to do with anything, but I just thought it was an interesting point. I wanted to mention it to you since you're really up on the rules of order and all that. But I don't know how it's switched from its meaning to kind of the opposite.
We've got it all wrong.
And I have loved your knowledge of the rules of order.
Well, absolutely. Nope, you've got a great education with that as well. But I'd love to give you the honor for the adjournment if you so choose.
I make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for your time tonight and your service, Randy.
Do we have to vote on the adjournment?
No. Well, there's a motion and a second.